Hey, good morning, everyone. Today is our regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Board of Selectment. It's Tuesday, June 25th, and it's 8:34. Sorry, I was a little delayed this morning, so in the office, not getting here. In front of you, you have today's agenda. I have two items that I wanted to add to today's agenda. The first being a purchase order approval from the town clerk. I think you have in front of you the item. And then also the addition of approval to increase the PO for Plaza Realty for electrical service at 39 Locust Street. And that one is, so you guys don't have that in front of you. It's in the amount of $18,904. So that needs to get paid. So if I could get, so I can put, why don't I just put them at the, let's see, where's, at the end? Okay, so we'll put item one after the item 12. Is that all right? At the very end? I'll make it the new 13 is the purchase order for the town clerk. And then the Plaza Realty, that's going to be Tiger. So where's Tiger going? Why don't I have him go right after item? Yeah, I'll do it right after item 11. So that'll be the new Plaza Realty. So if.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay. So, and then could I get a motion to approve? And that's unanimous. And could I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And then you also should have the minutes from last week's meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, if I could get a motion to approve the minutes from our June 18th regular meeting.
So moved.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address: bosdistribution@newcanonct.gov. Do I have anyone wishing to make a comment? Okay, moving on. Item four, perfect timing, John. Irrigation repairs, Steve Banco pool. Oh, Todd too, sorry.
Good morning.
Name to the agenda. I just see yours.
Good morning. The Parks and Recreation Department is seeking selection approval to enter into contract with summer rain irrigation, but we contacted and received a proposal from, with the repaving of the Banco Pool parking lot, we need to upgrade the irrigation lines and valves around the front entrance and around the walkways. The total cost for the project is $4,400 hours and the money is available in the irrigation upgrade capital account.
That's to keep the landscaping.
The very front, the front island and the planters on both sides and the new sign, new sign.
When you first pulling off.
We'll finally have irrigation, so we won't be running a hose to that all summer long.
Yeah, I will say, I was over at the pool last week and the paving looks gorgeous. The pool looks gorgeous. It's so clean and I cannot believe how many people are using it in the best of ways.
So it's nice to start off the season with a real hot week that way.
Yeah, but I just want to say like, I've seen a marked increase in the maintenance in the pool, the cleanliness of it. So thank you. And Tiger, beautiful, shout out for the paving. I mean, it's a work of art.
Yes, that's great. My only question is, do we use summer rain elsewhere? And that's why you use them? Because I mean, there's lots of irrigation companies. So I just, and you didn't need to go out to bed for this. So it's not.
Yeah, we, we do use summer rain for our emergency repairs. Anything that's big that we can't handle in-house. And they've installed a lot of our systems.
Yep.
So they've been working on the pool system for probably the last 10 years.
Okay.
About, and so they know the system.
That's, that's great. All right. Do I have any other questions? Okay, seeing then, if I could get a motion to approve or request from the Parks and Recreation Department to enter into a contract with summer rain in the amount of $4,400 for upgrades to the irrigation system around the Banco Pool.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Sludge hauling, FY24.
Good morning. I'll be presenting for Nick. Nick, we're down one at the plant right now. So he needs to be, he needs to be there for the day. So this is an increase in our sludge hauling contract. I should say that the PO itself, so we had an initial PO for the year based upon our gallonage from the previous year. And speaking to Nick, it seems like every year our gallonage goes up, you know, a little bit increase in, in population drives a little bit more increase. You know, he's trying to exactly figure out, you know, post COVID, we're seeing our numbers climb a little bit. So not, not to bore you, but we, we processed 353 metric tons of sludge. Last year, we processed 361 metric tons of sludge this year. So up eight metric tons. That drives that kind of delta for the, for the increase itself. Plus, we're in a five-year contract with Synagro. This is our third year and each year they've got a slight increase for the, not only the processing fee, but the hauling fee. And now the state has actually added an overland use fee for, for the trucks to actually haul, if you will. So there's a fee that's coming from the state that wasn't there last year. So all told, we, we need $37,000 in additional money to, for the PO itself to finish the year. The monies are available and we would just like to have it to increase the PO with Synagro.
Tiger, can I ask you a question on when we do the five-year contracts? So I'm assuming the five-year contracts have a variable for additional costs like that the state drop on, right? It seems like it's a hard thing to, to budget out five years because.
That won't, we, that was an unanticipated mandate that came in, an unfunded mandate from the state that, that, you know, five years ago, I never know if we had a contract for a year, we would have known it was coming, if you will. So there's nothing, all, all that's budgeted in there is, is an increase for the processing and then possibly a fuel surcharge that is there. Other than that, we don't have any other caveats, if you will, in the contract.
So are we now in the, what year of the contract?
Three. So this will go back in '26 will be, will be renewed at that time. And we can revisit at that time if you, if the select one would like to be a two-year, three-year, whatever duration you would like. We've, we had success over the years out of five, and then we started to kind of bring them down to a three and a two, if you will, similar to what we were doing at the transfer station. Same thing, our hauling was at a five-year for a couple of years. We did very well for that. And now we're back down to about a two-year or three-year contract.
Yeah, it's, it's just tricky because, you know, it's hard for people to project out what their disposal costs are going to be. So it's hard.
Exactly. So, yeah, the, like I said, we, we were successful. Synagro's been fantastic with us. It's just a question of we have increased volume and then an additional surcharge, if you will.
Thanks.
What does 24 look like? Any going forward? You know, because as we increase, we're increasing the price per gallon every year. And if you're saying that, I mean, is our trend to keep going up? So this delta will be larger next year or?
There's a, yeah, there's a slight increase in the price per gallonage for next year for 2024.
Your slide is helpful because every year it goes up. You know, the contracts were written so that every year it increases, which, you know, I just, I guess their pricing and just cost of inflation in there, but.
It just does.
And it's, and then usage, you know, as like I said, as the, you know, we're hoping that if the population either declines or, or steadies, if you will. It was interesting to note that each year we're seeing a little bit of an uptick in, in the amount of sludge that we're processing, if you will, you know, because it's not that large of a population increase.
And we're not adding any more to the sewer.
Yeah. We have not at present.
Thank you.
Yeah, because they got an increase even when there was a zero inflationary.
Well, that's.
I mean, they get it no matter what. They get it when there isn't. But then, you know, right now we're probably winning a little bit because of, because inflation's higher than we, you know? We don't have, even the economies, economists don't project out really well. So, you know.
But also disposal of this type of material can be tricky.
Like where do we, where do we dispose? Where do they take it?
Processing plant that, I'm not quite certain where.
Or out of state?
This one is out of state, I believe. But there are, to Amy's point, there, there are new regulations coming forward for PFAS and things. So we're already, you know, we're already starting to test our wastewater, if you will, and we're going to test our landfill. The leachate that comes out of the landfill, there's a small amount of leachate that comes out of landfill. We're doing exactly those to get ahead of the curve. So when the regulations come forward, we'll be, we'll know exactly where we are and, and what we would need to process if, if, if the regulation comes forward that we would need to handle it on our end. And if say it wouldn't be handled on the, on say the water side, if you want, on the aquarium waterside. But we're starting to look at that as well.
All right. It's a necessary process.
It is.
All right. So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to increase a previously approved purchase order with Synagro Technologies by the amount of $37,000 to, due to a price increase in per gallon and sludge production at their water pollution control facility. It's really not an increase in price per gallon. It's really a usage.
Yes, it's an increase in, in gallonage.
Yeah, not in price per gallon now.
Year over the year it was, but not for this.
Contractually, we knew that.
That's correct.
So the 37,000 really has nothing to do with the price increase. It has everything to do with volume. I just, can we, I'd like to edit that in the minutes because it has enough.
From price to volume?
Yeah, just, just reduce, get rid of due to price and say due to volume.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So Nick just texted me, he said there's an increase of 219,600 gallons at 5% solids for, for, that gives us a total of 36 more truckloads, 6100 gallons each. So that tells you the difference between the metric tonnage. That tells you that's the calculation there.
Yeah.
He had to go back and cut, because I asked him this morning, he had to go back and calculate it, so.
Thank you. Okay, so did, did we get the approvals or do I need the approvals?
No, you need.
Okay, so.
Motion amended.
As the amended motion, can I get an approval?
I'm second.
Or Amy, do you?
Yes, so moved.
It's second.
It's unanimous. Thank you, sorry about that. Human Services. So this is exciting. So I want it, before they start, I'd like to, you know, officially welcome you into the new role. I mean, you were here when we approved you, but Marcy is now the interim director of Human Services for, for the town, so.
It's the first business call.
Yes.
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. Human Services is here to request approval for POs for the following approved grant expenditures. We need $50,000 for Get About, $96,000 for Kids in Crisis, $8,000 for New Canaan Cares, $10,000 for the Domestic Violence Crisis Center, $25,000 for New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program, $5,000 for Child Guidance Center, and $5,000 for Meals on Wheels.
And these were all in the budget, specifically identified in the budget this year.
So 2025 budget or 2024?
The 2025, this was for the 2025 budget.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, great.
A total of $199.
A total, yes, total of $199. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
I mean, all of these, all of these are so vital to the community. And you look down this list and this is a who's who of, of our great organizations in New Canaan. So, I mean, it's, oh, obviously we all support your work and the work of all these organizations. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the interim, Human Services Director has previously approved purchase orders for the following expenditures that Marcy already read out. $199,000.
So moved.
Second. It's unanimous.
Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you. Great first job made. All right. Tiger, Highway Department purchase orders.
Morning again. So this, this is in, for fiscal '25, these are our blanket purchase orders for the Highway Department. Last session, we, we had approved page one. So there was four pages, so.
No wonder we're making three times.
I tabulated, I put a page number down at the bottom so that, so that we, so, you know, we would know later that there's more than one page. So this is basically based upon prior years expenditures at the Highway Department for various expenditures. Anything from road signage, pipe cleaning, loader parts, tires for the fleet, as we've discussed before, uniforms, all the way down to sweeper parts and truck parts. There are vendors that we've used in the past. Their pricing has been excellent. Their service has been excellent. The reason, some of the reasons why we continue to work with them. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have on, on any of the items. Moses in the audience, in case there's any questions you might have.
Okay, well, Mo, come on up.
Well, Mo.
I know you love coming up. I just have one question because this is, you know, this is the new fiscal year with the new purchase ordering plan. So did we do, you know, we won't have a ton of requests coming back with PO increases unless we have like a major breakdown in something.
Yeah, this is, so in the, prior to this, we weren't allowed to do blanket POs.
Yeah.
So it's a whole new ballgame for us.
Good, no, I, I mean, it's a new process. I, I, yeah.
Andy does 90% of it.
Yeah.
He, he's happy with it.
Good.
He doesn't want to do the.
Yeah, it's a lot of extra work and it's good, it's a good discipline.
We think we are. You know, like I said, borrowing something that we don't know about.
Okay, good.
If I can just, this kind of follow up on last week's discussion. So I know this, these have all been approved for next year. So as we developed these estimates, was it off of last year or was it saying, this is what we need? This is what we think it's going to cost?
Well, history and.
Okay, so this is.
Prices are going up. The world's crazy. I don't know what happened, but, you know, I mean, it, the prices are crazy. When we were paying, we were paying $4 a foot for ADS pipe and we're paying 12.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's crazy.
Yeah, okay. So, so these are, all these numbers are the best assumptions we have for next year based on our history and what we think going forward. Okay, thanks.
You know, like we have an estimate of our bodywork, for instance. We can't anticipate what our body, what trucks will get damaged, but it's, it's based on approximately what's happening. Could be better, could be worse.
Great.
And the, the way that we're working this now, the accounting part of it, like Ann's side of it, hasn't changed at all. It's, you know, we're keeping track of everything right down to the dollar. It's just a different way of, of presenting so that you don't have to keep coming back, you know, every, every minute you spend money, so.
Yeah, just spend to buy two tires.
Right.
That you had planned on buying.
So it's important that the public knows that the process has changed, but the behind the scenes stuff hasn't changed at all. So we're still going to be very diligent in terms of getting, getting everything ticked intact, so.
That's why I think in that regard, the process is going to get better.
Yeah, good.
Excellent.
Okay, if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Highway Department to purchase the following goods and services. East Coast Signs, $20,000. Ben Romeo, $9,000. One Back, $20,000. Prism Office, $800. WB Mason, $7,000. WI Clark, $7,500. Brandman's Equipment, $7,000. ONG Industries, $25,000. AC Auto Parts, $7,000, oh, sorry, Auto Body, sorry, $7,000. Napsco, $7,000. Divine Brothers, $7,000. Bella, Bellardinelli Tires, $25,000. Ready Care, $2,000. UniFirst Corp, $7,000. Web Construction, $10,000. CNC Hydraulics, $6,000. Norwalk Transmission, $7,000. Amazon, $4,000. Staples, $2,000. East Coast Signs, $9,000. For truck parts, Freightliner, $10,000. Allegiance Truck, $7,500. And municipal parts, $12,000. Yes.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, one more. Purchase orders for this year, FY24.
Right, so these are, these are four purchase orders. Pulsonello Fuel, East Coast Sign, Tri-County Contractors, and Ray Jürgen. This is for work that we'll finish out the year with. For Pulsonello, it's Fleet Oil and Lubricants. East Coast Signs is for Plowblade purchases.
For what? I'm sorry.
Plowblade.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's going to snow soon, so.
Right.
We need to change the.
But East Coast Signs for Plowblade.
That's why I was like.
I know.
I have asked it before.
Right. When we bought sweeper parts and sweeper brooms, they're, they're our go-to for that, as is most of the municipalities in the area. Roadside mower.
That's cutting edges for the plow. It's not a plow, right?
No, just cutting edge. Yes, cutting edge.
Carbide.
Yeah. Roadside mower parts for Tri-County Contractors. And then our, those for new teeth for the, for the, for the roadside mowers. And then a maintenance of our garage list, which is mandatory by Ray Jürgen.
What, what does Tri-County do again? Sorry?
Tri-County is. Track, yeah.
So we have our, we have roadside mowers that go out. They have teeth.
Oh, okay.
And they find a rock or.
Yeah.
The wire buried in the ground and then rip your teeth out. We got them.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ray Jürgen.
Ray Jürgen.
Jürgen is all our shops of lifts, oil pumps, fans, ventilator fans, everything, air, air hoses, everything in the shop.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. If it's, if not, then if I could get a motion to approve or request to approve a blanket purchase orders and like, approved blanket purchase orders for the following purchases. Pulsonello Fuels, $3,300. East Coast Signs, $3,500. Tri-County Contractors, $3,500. Ray Jürgen, $4,328.28.
So moved.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Track.
It's the bleachers. Bleachers for the bleacher repair. So right there. So the, this next is for, for additional seating at the track inside the, inside the embankment. We have a bleacher system, if you will. It's kind of built into the, into the, the embankment. In speaking with the Department of Justice, they would like us to integrate some seats within the, the bleacher system itself or the seating system. We had seats in our plan that are directly above it, basically what we consider to be in the best viewing angle. So if you're.
So like the top level, right?
Level, right. So if you have a, if you have a small area of assembly, you don't necessarily have to have seating vertically, okay? Dispersed seating vertically. You have to have dispersed seating horizontally. And for a small area of assembly, which this is, which we consider this to be the, you need it in quadrant two and three. So you have quadrant one, two, three, four. So two and three are in the middle. So we had seating at the upper level, you know, at the best viewing angle, if you will. At the time, the Department of Justice wanted to see us integrate some seating within the, the bleacher itself. So they actually had.
Say why?
Of inclusion, so that you're not necessarily above, you're within. So we went back to the contractor, Peter Lani Incorporated, and asked them what, what could, you know, what was the art of the possible, if you will, to see what, what we could do to try to move a seat, remove some of the material and put it in a different location and thereby create some additional seating. So we were able to, they're modular, so it was difficult. We had to kind of determine whether or not we could do it. So we went, we had a couple of discussions with the contractor and with the DOJ and came forward with these four locations where we can put accessible seating with companion seating adjacent to it within the complex itself. So that price from Peter Lani is $3,200. I added $500 of a contingency, that's 15%, but the adjusting case, there's something as we start to take this part, if you will, this modular system apart, if there's any problem, something breaks for a project total of $3,700 and the funds are currently available for the project itself.
So Tiger, when, when this, the project was built, we did appropriately have ADA seating. Subsequently, it's been looked at again and it's been recommended we do this additional seating, right?
Right.
So when we built it, we, it was there. Okay, yeah.
We had the consideration to have them there and then it was just.
Is it just an interpretation of, of, because it's like, if we followed the regulations when we built it, why are we now having to modify?
Modify? Was, this was their, this was their recommendation and their request, almost their mandate, if you will, to have them included. They like to have them included within. They consider that, you know, what we.
Is that in the regulation?
That's, yes, it's.
So we didn't follow the.
We did, because our, our interpretation was that they were right above, you know, with, you.
Yeah, they're in, within the seating.
You enter facility from above.
Right.
And as you entered the facility, you came upon the accessible seating and then the embankment, they wanted them in the embankment. So it's a different interpretation, if you will.
So, so when you, when you have to deal with the embankment and.
Yeah.
Wheelchairs is tricky.
Yeah.
So now you have to go down. You have to go down and up. But, and so we, when we put them in, like you remember when they modified movie theaters, like the back row would be four.
Yes.
So, so we thought we did it appropriately. They'd come in and said, do this.
They actually, you know, they asked, can we, you know, can we modify it? We said, well, let's go back and ask the contractor if we can modify. And if it's not exorbitantly expensive, where I've got to take the whole thing out and put it back in again, and, and it's, you know.
So we can.
So, right. So during the, during the discussions, this was the, this was determined.
So we should.
Additional ramping or anything that we had to do to get folks down? You know, you mentioned.
We already, we already performed that. We put in an additional space, accessible space, and then a, an accessible walkway to where we, because we had built some additional seating as well at the finish line. Probably the, almost the best seating because it's right at the finish line to the 100 yard, 100 meter dash. And that, that route will, helps us access. So we have access actually now from both sides, from the tennis court side and from the parking space itself and directly adjacent from that parking lot.
Because if you're in a wheelchair too, you could, you could get down to that point, which is the best viewing at the finish line and actually, you know, place the wheelchair like right at the finish line.
Yes, you can.
Because it's.
Yeah, we have about, we have six spaces there.
Yeah.
As well, at the finish line.
So we have it up top, we have it down below, and now we'll have it in the middle.
Integrated inside, so.
Okay.
Can't get any better than that.
Right.
All right. Any other questions?
Thanks.
If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Peter Lani in the amount of three thousand two hundred dollars plus a contingency of five hundred dollars for a total, total cost of three thousand seven hundred dollars. The project entails the installation of additional accessible and companion seating at the New Haven High School track bleachers.
So moved. Thank you.
So we had a concerned citizen that asked us to, you know, talk about this and I think we've answered the questions as far as that's concerned, but you know.
We, we tried to do it and then they've just come back and said, make it a little better. So, and we can make it a little better without spending a ton of money. So.
Well, and this is evidence of that. I mean, we're under four thousand dollars. We're, we're actually fixing the issue. So.
Correct.
Great.
Nicely done. Thank you, Tiger.
Okay, pave twenty twenty-four.
So this is our, this is a contract for what we consider pavement preservation courses. So this is a rubberized chip seal and what's called an ultra-thin bonded wearing course. This goes on top of, excuse me, the HIP, hot in place asphalt. In the past, we were using micro thin overlay. We met with some local towns and some other areas that are working on with different materials that are seeing a better longevity and a better riding surface, albeit the rubberized chip seal on the ultra-thin bonded wearing course, which actually are less expensive than the, than the micro. So we reviewed those, most reviewed them in the field. I reviewed them in the field. They're working very well for these other municipalities. We would like to you start utilizing this technique. Allstate Construction is on the state low bid. On basically two contractors that do this type of work and they almost split the state. Allstates answered our bid request, request for bids. They came in at six hundred ninety-two thousand two fifty. I added a fifteen percent contingency of a hundred thousand dollars for a total of seven ninety-two two fifty. Funds are available and it's for Beach Road, Betsy's Lane, Cedar Lane, Lost District and Luke's Woods. Which are basically the roads that we did HIP on. The only road that we'll be putting a micro on is Turtleback Road South. And the only reason for that is because the rest of Turtleback Road, the area, Turtleback Road, Turtleback Lane, east, west, they're all getting a micro. So instead of trying to mobilize two contractors in, we'll use a micro thin overlay there, but you already approved that contract prior.
So, so this will be a new material for us.
By two
How long, how long have the other municipalities been using it? Do we know?
Well, sweet, have the
I just, just in terms of, because, and this is supposed to last how long, plus or minus?
Same as the, same as the micro, ten years.
They've used it a long time. It was actually brought to my attention by the person that puts down the HIP. He said, why don't you look at covering it with a, with a ultra-wearing bonding course or a rubber chip?
Right.
So they've been using it more than ten years. So we know that it works.
Yes, yes. It's big up in Massachusetts.
Right. And we, we started looking at the ultra-thin bonded wearing course. It was actually called a Nova chip at the time. And some of it was in town. It's actually a high friction pavement. So the state put it in on one twenty-four at the corner by the Historical Society and another location in town. So we were starting to look at utilizing this, this ultra-thin bonded wearing course in town as well. We just hadn't pulled the trigger yet.
Okay.
And then the Society, is that the, on the bend there?
On the bend there.
Your tires are, are stickier there? Is that?
Yeah.
It's higher friction. And it helped a lot up there.
Yes, yeah, the accident rate dropped quite, quite substantially once the state put that in. It was, it was a request from us to have them look at it and they put it in and, and we saw a reduction in accidents specifically there.
And the rubber chip is, I was told on a twenty foot wide road, a mile long, there was twelve hundred used tires that go into it.
And so recycling.
And allegedly, I don't know. Allegedly, as the road cracks, because it's, it's, it's rubber, it will reseal.
Oh, okay, interesting. That makes sense.
Yeah, want to check it out.
Yeah. No, I, I just ask because if we're putting down something that we're hoping we'll get ten years, we want to make sure the, the, the other municipalities have used it for ten years. So we know it works.
That's why we don't start, we're, we're not the first one out of the box. We let, you know, four or five others
Yeah.
Take care of that.
Big any pigs.
Exactly.
So if we get lucky, maybe our crack ceiling budget might go down.
Maybe.
Always.
Can't promise that.
Good answer.
And on the hot in place stuff, the residents, this is the canopy issue with, so the, do the residents in these areas know about?
Well, that's all done. That's been done.
Well, the HIP is done. So, and we had, we had put out on Everbridge the, that it was happening.
Yeah.
We did get a couple of complaints from residents, likely four or five, I'd say. Most were happy that they just got notified and then some were upset about the, the burn, if you will. I'm thinking that the grass that got, that got charred will, will be back almost now because of the rain and the, the trees themselves. If we need to, if the highway department needs to trim, so we will, but it doesn't kill the tree. It just adversely affects it for a season. But we haven't, after that four or five complaints, we haven't heard.
I mean, it's really, it's like an early fall, basically.
And I actually met, met with people and I said, let us put the second, let us, let us put the topping on this. And then we'll come out and see what needs to be done. We've got a top soil.
Right. I'd rather finish the work and then come out and repair anything that we might need to.
All right.
Thank you.
So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Allstate's Construction, the amount of six hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred fifty dollars plus a contingency of a hundred thousand dollars for a total cost of seven hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. The project entails either a rubberized chip seal overlay or ultra-thin bonded wearing course overlay over the roads that have recently received hot in place asphalt recyc.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Hey guys, while we're talking about paving, yesterday went really well at the railroad. I mean, the guys were in and out of there quick. It was, it looks amazing.
Yeah, it was nice. I got there in the morning and six trucks lined up, all covered, waiting to go. So there was no delay whatsoever. And then once one leaves, by the time that last six truck was done, he was back.
We actually tried to keep him off it till today, but we lost.
I saw, I saw someone parking on it. Did they break through?
We're like, let's, let's see if we get one more day out of it. Let it shit.
Somebody break the caution tape?
Yeah.
I saw it. There were two cars parked. I were like, how did they get in there?
Oh, that's, that's standard.
He got about the last spot yesterday.
Yeah, it was tight.
But Monday's a good day to do it.
Well, yesterday was, but Monday is the best day according to Stacy.
But he got a spot.
Yeah, when we drove through, it was full. Yeah, I drove through it at seven thirty, quarter to eight, it was full.
Are we going to stripe that or?
Stripe shortly. Wait a couple of days for the oils to come off of it. And then Safety Markets has already been notified to, to hurry and get there because it's been a month or so. We've been doing quite well, you know, as far as like people utilizing the lot, not, not having, you know, arguments as to where lines should be. Today, we're doing the locust lot. We should be done today. We're hoping that the locust lot will be complete.
The locust lot I've been talking about for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
It's getting tight today.
Yeah. It's one of the first items that I estimated back in nineteen ninety was that parking lot, to be honest.
We, we do have a Yankee approach here.
Yeah.
I think we got our money out of it.
Yeah.
Let's put it that way.
At some point, it ends up, yes, it ends up costing you a lot more if you don't. All right, so moving on to Wavine House.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mo. Man, a few words. The so this next is an answer, is in response to, to the board's request to have the roof assessed at Wavine House while we're doing the facade and chimney assessment. So we asked Hoffman Architects and Engineers to go back and give us a revised proposal, basically an increase in scope, if you will, to, to take a look at the, the roof on the Wavine House. They proposed that to, to cost six thousand two hundred dollars in, which would be on top of their, their previous fee of thirty-eight nine fifty to do the envelope consulting. In speaking with Erin, the project manager, she's trying to be here the end of this week and definitely next week. The contractor is slated to come in next week. That'll give her the lift capability so that they can see everything. And then she'll be looking at those two weeks and with the thought to give us a report or at least a draft report by July fifteenth.
So Tiger, they were already getting a lift in, right, to kind of look, see. So I'm just, you know, so this is about a twenty-five percent increase and, and we need to look at the roof. Is it that much more work?
It's additional time and then additional, you know, and then additional work for the, for the, for the, the report itself. It's not, to your point, yeah, there's no real, you know, there's some additional time for the lift, but predominantly it's the engineering time and then, and then the reporting time, if you will.
That makes sense. And like I, I just think we have to, we have to, you know, how are you going to figure out where the water is a hundred percent if you don't know if the roof has some
Well, I mean, as, as a percentage of what that house is worth and the scope of money, we've already put in it, six thousand dollars is going to be money well spent.
And when we think about how little we put in that building since we acquired it, what, sixty years ago? So. Yeah.
What is the second opinion?
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I think it's really important. So.
So just under scope of services and deliverables, what should we expect for the, for the, is it, they're coming back. Obviously, we're going to have them speak to us. Is there a full report that they're
There is a, yes. So the one will be, she'll be here to present her report to the board. And the second is, yeah, there'll be a full report, if you will, for both the roof, the envelope at Wavy, Lapham, and the chimneys at Lapham. And then she'll, she'll, she'll be here to present her findings.
I'm assuming there'll be plenty of photos and plenty of
Yes.
Things that she's, okay, good.
This is a priority. So this is good. Yep. All right. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to extend the contract with Hoffman Architects and Engineers to include additional scope in the amount of six thousand two hundred dollars. The project entails the review and assessment of the roof at Wavine House.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Tiger.
Oh, then I, sorry, one more item. The
Yes.
So
So I was just moving on that Plaza Realty.
Came in late, but I appreciate it being added to the agenda. So this is for the increased electrical costs at thirty-nine locusts, our temporary police department. Everything in the facility is electric, a little bit different than what we had at the, at the police department itself. And our run rate, since it's a twenty-four hour building, run rate's a little bit higher than, say, what the BOE had, you know, since it was more of an office structure. So we pay Plaza Realty and then Plaza, Plaza Realty pays for our electrical consumption, if you will. So this is an increase to Plaza Realty's PO that we have existing. There's about six thousand dollars left in there. We've got about twenty-four thousand dollars worth of expenses to come for the electrical to get us to the end of June. And then we'll come back with a new PO for next year, for the remainder of our stay, if you will. So this is a request for an increase of eighteen thousand and change for Plaza Realty's PO.
I should know this. Is this expense included in the police department's soft costs for the move? I'm just
I know, I'm wondering.
I, I, and I should remember, but I don't because I know we had an item for the cost.
Right, coming out of the police department.
Right.
Right, this is coming out of the police department's budget.
Okay.
Okay, it's on a PD's budget.
A PD's budget, yeah.
General budget. Okay.
Tiger, any idea that eighteen nine four, how many months does that cover?
Eighteen, well, that, that
I know we're going backwards.
It's basically, we started in January, if you will, right? So we had, so January, February, March, April, May, June.
For six months, basically.
Yeah, so a six-month period, but it was twenty-five thousand dollars. So we, it's twenty-five thousand dollars over what we, but we had six thousand left in the PO. So it's an eighteen thousand dollars total change. It's about ten thousand dollars a month is what it's running us.
Yeah, that's a, because this is a three thousand dollar addition. So we, maybe we calculated seven, now it's ten, so.
But from that, from the police department's budget, their cost of operating, the utilities on the, on their building, they're constructed are being struck, we don't have cost there. So this, we're offsetting that. Used.
Right.
So that's offsetting because they don't, the increase is because they don't have that differential between gas and electric. Right.
Thirty-nine locusts is heat and electricity are all electric. So it's electric heat, so.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
So if I could get a request to, or if I could get a motion to approve a request to increase the PO for Plaza Realty for electrical service charges for three months, thirty-nine Locust Avenue at the N, Police Department Temporary Facilities for eighteen thousand nine hundred four dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to outsourced services, the OCIO and custodial services.
Good morning. These are the three contracts. If you remember, I believe it was two months ago, the Board of Selectmen approved that we are going from Vanguard to Russell because Vanguard is getting out of the public pension business. So we got the contracts, we sent them to legal, we went back and forth. And so these are the final contracts for the pension plan, the OPEP plan and the Marcella Scholarship.
And just in the motion that I'm going to read, the custody services actually, even though we, we contract with Russell, State Street will be providing the custody service. But we'll be paying Russell and now State Street. But it really, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's already been approved. It's been approved by the pension committee.
Yeah.
This is just, it's embedded by the lawyers.
Yeah, that was going to be a question is, you know, in terms of the logistics of, of who is responsible to approve. So obviously it's us. Does the Board of Finance or Town Treasurer or anybody else weigh in on that? Is there?
The Pension Committee.
Advisory Committee is the administrative body of the pension. So they have to approve it. So they approved it. And then we had to get the Board of Selectmen to approve it. And then the contracts gets approved by the Board of Selectmen because they're contracts. So I think we've covered all of our bases. And then once this is approved, the monies will start to transfer, starting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay. They, they, they do a great job.
Yeah.
Then I was on that subcommittee, which is why it's a great job because I'm not, I don't know. They do, they do a terrific job really evaluating that. And we, we had no choice. And Vanguard was getting out. We had to switch.
All right.
All right.
So if I could get a motion to approve a request to enter into a contract with Russell Investments to provide three service areas, investment advisory, custodial through State Street and fund administration for the pension plan, pension plan, OPEP Trust and Mildred F. Marcella Scholarship Fund.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
And while we have you, five days left, we're going to make it.
If we don't, I'm in big trouble. We're going to make it. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the purchase order approval with the town clerk.
Good morning.
Morning. We never get to see you, Claudia. Nice to see you.
Thank you for adding me. I am here today to request a purchase order in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four for the values, I'm sorry, Valsoft Corporation, which was formerly known as COT Systems. Seven thousand dollars is for microfilming services, audit fees, license and support services for our land records management system. And eight thousand dollars is for the historic preservation grant involving the scanning of our land records from nineteen fifty to nine, back to nineteen twenty. We currently have the funds for this request. We don't need additional funding, but we do need your approval.
And it just, it's an increase to a PO. There's a PO already in place. It's an increase to a PO versus a brand new PO.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So are these like, was it just a big increase in expenses from these current vendors for what we were doing? Or is it new, new services that we just use these firms for?
We changed over, or it changed over from COT to Val, Valsoft, if you get the name of it.
Right.
And the dollar amount that was put on the new PO wasn't enough to cover the expenses through the end of the year.
Okay.
So now that's coming up. So we'll start. She'll, Claudia's going to have her new ones coming in, in July.
Okay. Can you explain the historic preservation grant of eight thousand, how that's an expense?
From an expense perspective, we put the revenue in the grant fund.
Okay.
So we need to go out now and get the company, there's a one main company that does that, forget it right now. That comes in and does all the either microfishing or copying of it. So that expense, then it will come out of the grant.
Okay, so the eight thousand is offset by grant money that came in. Okay.
We do, we have the money.
Okay, I was just trying to understand how that worked.
Yeah.
So then the net cost to the town on this is more like seven thousand dollars of this request, because we have eight thousand offsetting.
Yeah.
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 Any other questions? All right, if not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the town clerk for the following purchase order. Valso, Valsoft Corporation, Inc., doing businesses, COT Systems for microfilm services in the amount of a thousand dollars, audit fees in the amount of a thousand dollars, license and support in the amount of five thousand dollars and for the historic preservation grant of eight thousand dollars totaling fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and then on your tablets, you have our contracts under ten thousand dollars. There is one modification to this. It shouldn't be on here, actually. It is, I haven't seen it yet, though. Is it Reed and Rege? So there's professional services, the Reed and Rege, that's actually related to the pension fund and it's not, that goes to the pension fund. It's not a town. I mean, it's an expense, but it's not something you would normally, that's a pension fund expense that doesn't come to us.
So those two line items?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven, one, seven, nine.
Okay, so
Yep, that's an expense of the pension fund and is paid for through the pension fund. So, yeah, okay, okay.
One that stood out, what's a family fireworks flag?
Oh, my gosh. I know. It was a very large, let's talk to John about the flag, since John gave me the PO and I actually had the same reaction. I'm like,
That's a, that's a pretty expensive flag.
I mean, I'm a very patriotic person, but it was an expensive flag.
It's a little bit big. It's, I believe, twenty by
Twenty-eight by thirty-two.
And we used to hang it off the back of the house.
Right, right.
Now that there's no access to the roof, we, we take our lift out into the field. And so we put a fire across that and we hang the flag from there.
So this is a, literally a giant American flag.
Giant American flag.
Why did, why did we go for a giant flag versus just a more normal sized flag?
Because we've done it in the past and they had to replace it.
Same size? The, the one we used to have?
It's a little bit bigger.
Like a little bit or a lot of it bigger?
No, no, it's not a lot bigger. It's a little bigger than the one that we've been using, which unfortunately is just the point of being worn out. So, so that's, that's why I come, it comes out of the
Replace one at, at the flagpole in, in front of town hall. I walked, looked out of my office. I'm like, it is frayed.
Yeah, no, you don't want something scruffy. I get it.
Most of the flags in town twice a year. We definitely try to do them before Memorial Day. Lot depends on the weather.
Sure.
You know, if we have a lot of wet, windy days, they, they tatter after a while.
So we should be able to use this for five years. So is it only pulled out at Fourth of July?
I was going to say ten years, a hundred dollars a year.
It better not get frayed. It better be stored in a nice temperature controlled environment. So I don't have to write that, sign that.
Well, it lasts a long time. I have no idea how long we've had the other one. So, and this comes out of the special projects, family for, or family fireworks account.
Make sure you put it in your desk drawer so it doesn't go anywhere, please.
It's too big. It came in a box.
Wavine.
It's the temperature controlled environment I'm worried about. Okay. All right, if there are no, any other questions on the contracts? If not, the only comments I have are, you know, happy Fourth of July to everyone. And, you know, Playhouse is opening to the public on Friday. So go get your tickets
Exciting.
To see if, I guess, is what they're showing.
And they said eighteen dollars, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Well, compared to, you could pay thirty dollars and see a movie too, so.
Wow.
Wow. I, I have one thought and people might be like groaning on this one because we finally are just finishing up twenty twenty-four, going to twenty-five. But I think when we get into the summer months and some of the boards are a little less busy. I do think last year when we, we all came on board and all the capital budget was super big, right? And there were some difficult items to And there were some difficult items to understand. Um, so I think as as we have these slower months, this is a great time if there are unusual um capital items, let's take the time now to bring them forward, talk about them, make sure all the boards socialize them so that we don't get into the last minute scramble trying to understand. And I think a good example of that was the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. They were certainly doing a ton of work behind the scenes, but I think if we have something, let's let's spend the time now so people can do it when they're not so busy and really understand it. So then we get to the capital budget. It's not the scramble. I just, and and I think we mean to it and then we just kind of don't.
Yeah.
So um, you know, I think we can take the lead on that here saying, oh, hey, we know this is going to work, present to us. And then hopefully then it can socialize to the Board of Finance and Town Council so that the the process can be less of a scramble.
Yeah. So you know, to that end, I'd encourage both of you to look through the capital budget for next year, what was in for the and if there are specific things you'd like to hear about.
Bring it up.
Yeah, but that way I can prep the staff. Be prepared for it.
And you know, it's not just, you know, we don't want to pick on the Indian Athletic. It seems like, but there's a history of this and, you know, we've all been around government long enough to know at the last minute, there's always things that get thrown in there. And a lot of times it is um sort of the nonprofit world or volunteers who say, oh, my gosh, you know, budget's here. We've got to get going and get get this done. You know, I think of maybe the 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 flexi pave path at Irwin or some of the, some of the projects have come sort of at the last second. Where it's like, let's let's try to avoid those right at the, right at the finish line and uh to your point.
And it 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 just would make for a better discussion and for people understanding. And then we make better decisions because I think we've seen so often that we have these buildings, they need work. You get to the end and all of a sudden, you know, maintenance work gets kicked down. I mean, we we cannot keep kicking maintenance work down. I mean, I think Waveney is a perfect example. We are going to have Waveney. Waveney is not going to go away. And it needs, you know, to be focused on it. So if we talk about Waveney, a nature center, whatever, off cycle, then I think it will lead for a more disciplined approach capital.
Good point. All right. Oh, when are we meeting again, next week or?
No. It's Fourth of July.
Oh, it seems like we meet every week.
The joys of the year end, year end budget. Um, okay, if there are no other comments, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.